Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 10, 2016, meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission. We have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order about the clerkly piece carroll.
Mr. Louie?
Here.
Mr. Babcock?
Here.
Ms. Garcia?
Here.
Ms. Cool?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Oviedo?
Mr. Denny?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Let's move on to commission member announcements or reports. I have two. The first announcement for my fellow commissioners and the public is that I will not be here at our meeting in December, and Vice Chair Commissioner Babcock will be chairing that meeting. The second announcement I have is that I will be appointing Commissioners Sprague and Commissioner Garcia on the nominating committee for next year's chairman. Do you guys accept that appointing?
I do.
Yeah.
Any objection, Commissioner Babcock?
Nope.
All right. Any other announcements?
No.
Seeing none, let's move on to approval of our October 27, 2016 minutes. We've previously been provided those. Are there any corrections?
There was one correction. Let me just pull it out here really quick. There was testimony from the Home Builders Association at last meeting, and in the minutes it said the Homeowners Association.
Your mic.
Yeah. The Home Builders Association made comments about a project at the last meeting, and in the minutes it appeared that it was the Homeowners Association. So the correction needs to be that it is the Home Builders Association.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we could have a motion and approve the minutes with that correction.
I'd make a motion to make that change.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Sprague with that change that he articulated into the record. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Let's move on to cases withdrawn or requests for continuances. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two cases that have been withdrawn or requests for continuance tonight. The first is CP-19, MAP-14318. The applicant is Watts Chopping. The recommendation is to continue until December 8, 2016. And then the second item is GPA number 21, MAP-81. The applicant is the Kern County Public Works Department, and the recommendation is to continue that project until January 12 of 2017. That completes the reading of the case withdrawn or request for continuance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item D's recommendations be approved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Babcock, second by Commissioner Sprague. Please cast your votes.
Four ayes and one absent.
Thank you. Let's move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The consent agenda. These are items scheduled before your planning commission, which are being recommended for approval by the staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection to the project or the recommendation. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding the case. This evening, we have eight cases that are on the consent calendar. The first is consent item number one. This is conditional use permit number six, MAP number 145. The applicant is Granite Construction Company. The project is located approximately four miles east of the city of Arvin. The request is a modification of conditional use permit number six, MAP 145, which was originally approved on May 13, 1999, which allowed for the expansion of a surface mining operation reclamation plan in accordance with the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act of 1975. The project subsequently was modified again on February 13 in 2003, which allowed for an increase in the permitted depth of mining and had a revision to the boundary limits. And those were both in an A district. The project this evening is a request to change the reclamation requirements and amend conditions relating to the revegetation, maximum slopes, retention of waste rock stockpiles, and alteration of the mine boundary limits and the Williamson Act land use contract. Staff has provided your commission with an addendum that we did receive this evening. The addendum was a result of an additional comment letter that we received from the Department of Conservation, Office of Mine Reclamation. Based on the comments that the office had provided, staff has changed the recommendation. Staff is now recommending the addition of condition number 16, which will require the resubmital of a revised copy of the revegetation plan to address any comments from OMR. With that, the recommendation before your commission is as follows. To adopt a mitigation measure monitoring program, approve the modification of the conditional use permit, subject to the original conditions of approval, with the revision to conditions 7E, 7F, 7G, 7I, 8L, and the addition of conditions 15A, 15B, and 16, as recommended by staff, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised draft resolutions. The second item this evening on consent is case number three. This is specific plan amendment number 21, MAP 232, zone change case number 38, MAP 232, conditional use permit number 31, MAP 232, and conditional use permit number 32, MAP 232. The applicant is Sun Power Corporation Systems. There are two sites associated with this proposal. Roseman 5 is located south of Willow Avenue, north of Kingbird Avenue, between 140th Street West and 130th Street West, and Roseman 6 is located on the south side of Roseman Boulevard, between 140th Street West and 130th Street West. The recommendation before your commission is to amend the land -- sorry, the request before your commission this evening is to amend the land use open space and conservation element of the Willow Springs specific plan from map codes 5.3, 4.4 to map code 8.1 on 321 acres, from map code 5.6, 2.8 to map code 8.1, 2.8 on 58 acres, from map code 7.1, 4.4 to map codes 8.1 on 10.31 acres, and from map code 5.7, 2.6, 2.85 to map codes 8.1, 2.6, and 2.85 on 39 and 26 acres. There's also an amendment from map codes 5.7, 2.85 to map codes 8.1 on 38.8 acres, and from map code 6.2 to map code 8.1 on 18.16 acres or a more restrictive map code district. The project also includes change in zone classifications from E2.5 RS FPS to AFPS on 58 acres, and from E5 RS FPS to AFPS on 107 acres or more restrictive districts. The project includes a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a 30-megawatt solar facility on 165 acres for the Roseman 5 project, and to allow for the construction and operation of a 60-megawatt solar facility on 321 acres for the Roseman 6 project in an AFPS district. Your commission did receive an addendum on this project as well. The addendum was to correct some typographical errors that were in your previously attached resolutions. We do have a new recommendation with these clarifications. The recommendation before your commission now is to advise the planning commission, to recommend to the board of supervisors, to adopt Section 15091 findings and Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation measure monitoring program, approving the specific plan amendments as requested, approve the zone change as requested, approve conditional use permits as requested, subject to the recommended revised conditions of approval, and approve the memorandum of understanding and agreement, and authorize the chairman to sign, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the revised draft The fourth -- the third item on consent is case number four, conditional use permit number 32, MAP 214. The applicant is Blue Eagle Load Mining Company. This project is located approximately 4,000 feet northeast of Tehachapi Willow Springs Road and Bacchus Road intersection. The project is a conditional use permit that would allow an underground mining operation and development of a surface reclamation plan in accordance with the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act of 1975 in an A and an AFP district. Staff did provide your commission with an addendum regarding this particular project. As subsequent to distribution of the staff report, the access point had been clarified, and therefore, the comments previously provided from the Public Works Department are no longer necessary related to some of the conditions that they were requesting based on this new and revised access. So therefore, the Public Works Department recommended we delete the conditions. The recommendation before your commission is to adopt a mitigative negative declaration and mitigation measure monitoring program, approve the conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions, with the deletion of conditions 50, 51, and 52, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached revised draft resolution. Case number five this evening is conditional use permit number 17, MAP 184, modification number two, MAP 184. The applicant is T. Daniel Nuvo by Stephen Kiki. This project is located at 28950 Horse Thief Drive in the Tehachapi area. The request is a conditional use permit to allow a 50-room lodge in conjunction with an existing golf course in an E20 district, and a zone modification to allow a 43-foot, nine-inch-tall building where a maximum height of 35 feet is allowed in an E20 district. Staff did provide your commission with an addendum this evening. We received a letter subsequent to the distribution of your staff report from David Aaronson. Mr. Aaronson supports the proposal, but does believe that it is more appropriate for the hotel to be two stories in height. Staff has reviewed the particular comment, and at this time, our recommendation is remaining the same, that it would authorize the increase in height. The staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit, subject to recommended conditions, approve the zone modification, subject to recommended conditions, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolutions. Consent item number CA8 is conditional use permit number 72, MAP 10327. The applicant is the Council of Messianic Jewish Ministries International by Carlos Estrada. This project is located at 1440 Cressmont Drive in Bakersfield. The request is a conditional use permit that would allow a radio transmission tower in a C1 district. The staff recommendation is to approve in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. Item case number nine, Agricultural Preserve Number 10, inclusion map number 141. The applicant is Rodney Paula. The project is located at the northwest corner of Coles Levy Road and Bear Mountain Boulevard in the Bakersfield area. The project is the inclusion of approximately 80 acres within the boundaries of Ag Preserve Number 10. The staff recommendation is to advise the planning commission, to recommend to the board of supervisors, to approve the inclusion as requested, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. CA10 is Agricultural Preserve Number 11, exclusion map 102. The applicant is San Joaquin Refining Company by McIntosh and Associates. This project is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Merle Hager Drive and Airport Drive in Bakersfield. This request is the exclusion of approximately 111 acres from the boundaries of Agricultural Preserve Number 11. The staff recommendation is to advise your commission, to recommend to the board of supervisors, to approve the exclusion as requested, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. And the final item on consent this evening is case number 11, track number 7234 EOT, which stands for extension of time. The applicant is Sablewood Gardens LLC by McIntosh and Associates. The request is -- the project is located at the southeast corner of Airport Drive and Merle Hager Drive in the Bakersfield area. The request is an extension of time for a period of three years for vesting tentative track number 7234, originally approved on September 26 in 2013, which proposed to divide a 19.80-acre site into 44 lots consisting of 42 lots ranging in size from 7,155 square feet net to 17,466 square feet net for multifamily residential use. The project includes a 38,628-square-foot net lot and a 1.23-acre net lot for general commercial uses, and also included two limited design variation. The staff recommendation is to approve the three-year extension of time to October 5, 2019, subject to the original findings and adopted conditions of approval. With that, that completes the reading of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Would anyone in the audience like to have an item on the consent agenda removed from the consent agenda and heard at a full public hearing in its normal order? Would anyone like to do that? Seeing none, would any planning commissioner like to do that? No? I did get a note from Commissioner Babcock that he would like to vote on number three, consent agenda item number three separately, and he's going to be abstaining. And so is there any action on the consent agenda items without item number three? Accepting item number three. Is there a motion?
Oh, excuse me. I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the items as read into consent agenda by staff, excluding item number three, which will be heard in its order separately.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sprague, second by Commissioner Garcia. Please cast your votes.
All ayes.
And is there any action on consent agenda item number three?
Mr. Babcock wanted to speak on three.
No, Mr. Babcock didn't want to have it pulled from the consent agenda. He just wanted to have it voted on separately because I believe he's going to abstain.
Okay.
Any action on consent agenda?
I would make a motion that we approve item three as read into the record by staff.
Nice second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Sprague, second by Commissioner Garcia. Please cast your votes.
I don't know how to do number three. It's not on my screen.
I know. I don't know how to do number three. Can I just?
Well, let's have a verbal. We'll have a verbal.
Let's go ahead and do a -- is that okay with -- Mr. Hall, is that okay to do a roll call vote?
A verbal roll call will be fine.
Verbal roll call, please.
So, Mr. Babcock?
Abstained.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Louie?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Three ayes, one abstain.
And that brings us to the notice of appeal. Mr. Murphy, can you read the notice of appeal and also tell us which items it applies to?
I will, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, actions are subject to appeal to the board of supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. This first part applies to cases number one, four, five, and eight. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing. For track maps, so this would apply to item number 11, an appeal must be filed within 10 days from the date of decision of the planning commission. Any such appeal must be accompanied by appeal fee of $540. If no appeal is received, the action of the planning commission is final.
Thank you. That brings us to public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdiction. Would anyone like to address the commission? Seeing none, let's move on to our public hearings, and our one case on public hearing tonight is item number six. Mr. Denny?
Good evening, commissioners. With me tonight is Mr. Roque Nino. Mr. Nino is the supervising planner for the operations unit for the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department. Mr. Nino was made a supervising planner, I believe, just before your last hearing in October. He has worked with staff on these cases tonight for presentation before your commission. One item we have left on tonight's agenda is item number six. This is a conditional use permit to allow a church with associated accessory buildings, which include cargo containers, in an R2 district, which is a medium-density residential district. The staff report prepared identifies our project site as being an approximately half-acre parcel, slightly larger in size, located on the north side of Beardsley Avenue, west of North Chester in north Bakersfield. As I said, it's zoned R2 and designated HMR, which stands for high and medium-density residential. So our zoning and our general plan are consistent with each other. The original vision for the site was to be developed with medium residential, duplexes and things of that nature. The site is presently developed with two cargo containers. It is not residentially developed, and it has an active church on it, the church that's being requested before your commission tonight. Access to this site is provided by Beardsley Avenue, which is a local street entailing a 60-foot right-of-way. The applicant is requesting approval of this as they have established a use on the site without the necessary land use approvals. In zone districts, you can have church activities under a temporary event permit, which are limited to no more than 12 calendar days in a 365-day period. Those temporary event permits are typically for one year, one year only, and they generally are not reissued unless there are some extraordinary circumstances. In order to have a church more than 12 times a year in Kern County, you need to get approval of a conditional use permit or construct the church in a commercial or industrial zone. The site of the church that we're talking about provides religious services, which include a meal, and are held in a tent in the winter and under canopy in the summer. The activities are generally two days a week, on Sundays and Fridays, generally between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. Of course, there could be adjustments for daylight savings time. They generally have a maximum. In the staff report, it says of just under 100 individuals, 96 parishioners is what it specifies, along with the clergy. Presently, again, we have on that site two cargo containers. Generally, I think one is around 400 feet, the other one's 200 feet. We also have a commercial coach on the property, if Mr. Nino would put up our site plan. I'd like to point out that domestic water and sewer for the site is provided by Oil Dell Mutual Water Company in north of the river. I would also like to point out that the commercial coach that is on the site plan cannot remain. There is not a means by which you can obtain zoning approval for a commercial coach in a residential zone district. As such, should this project be approved, it will be removed, but the applicant is looking to construct a more conventional structure, wood frame, on the site that might serve uses that were presently handled by the commercial coach. For this particular type of facility, based on the activities there, they require 28 parking spaces and landscaping. The site plan, as identified in page two of the staff report, is lacking somewhat. They are only showing 23 parking spaces, where 28 is required based on the number of parishioners. The site plan also does not identify the landscaping that's required. The applicant has continued to work with staff as they move through the permitting process and has submitted a revised site plan, which Mr. Nino has put up, attempting to reflect the required amount of parking and landscaping. Should your commission approve this project tonight, it would be staff's recommendation that conditions be included that would require a revised site plan be submitted to staff for review and ultimately approval by the planning director for one purpose and one purpose only, and that's to substantiate that it complies with the county's development standards. The development standards are standards that would require for any normal development, and we routinely do that day in, day out, as part of the normal permitting process. There is no discretion involved, hence why staff is recommending that should you approve the project, that the director has the means by which to verify and affirm that it complies with the county's development standards. As I indicated on page, this site was established with a church without the necessary approvals. On page two of the staff report, it reflects that in June of 2016, they were cited by code compliance. I believe that complaint was originated as a result of the Kern County Fire Department because of the usage of a tent, which does require approval from the fire department. The applicant has been working with the Kern County Fire Department to correct the situation to ensure that if approval is obtained, that is in accordance with the county fire code requirements. Shortly after that, literally within two weeks, they applied for their conditional use permit. Staff has observed them to be readily attempting to be responsive to staff's questions and concerns and inquiries and getting the necessary information together so that first, as indicated on page two of the staff report, a violation hearing could be considered. The zoning ordinance adopted by the board prohibits staff from working on applications where there's a known violation before it goes to a violation hearing. The applicant did go to a violation hearing. It was held on August 18 of 2016. Attached in an addendum staff report, because I note while it said it was attached in the original staff report, it was not. So in the addendum, staff has provided the stipulations for that particular hearing. The applicant was able to demonstrate compliance with the necessary findings for the hearing officer to allow for the continued activities on that site without abating it so that staff could work on the application and schedule it for consideration before your commission tonight. We did notify surrounding property owners in the area, in addition to county agencies, state agencies, and federal agencies. Public Works Department Flood Plane Management did not express concerns, nor did the North River Recreation Park District. We did get two letters submitted from Anna Lee and Timothy W. Lee, who are area property owners. The letters were very similar, but different. Both individuals expressed concerns with regard to the existence of a church or consideration of a church at that location. They had indicated to staff that were already two churches in that neighborhood, that an additional church would result in additional traffic, specifically foot traffic. They believed that approval would negatively impact their tenant's security and area property values, and they indicated that they believe churches should be established using permanent structures rather than temporary structures. And as we've indicated, this type of church utilizes a canopy in the summer and a tent in the winter. Your commission is reminded of the Religious Land Use and Institutional Persons Act of 2000, also known as RELUPA. In that information, which has been included in your staff report, federal law essentially prohibits governmental agencies from requiring land use regulations that impose a substantial burden on religious institutions, except where that burden advances a compelling governmental interest and is at least restrictive means of furthering that interest. The law also prohibits discrimination between different types of religious institutions. In considering any improvements associated with this project, your commission is asked to keep in mind that the least restrictive means of addressing an impact should be used. The classic example is a wall. If a wall is believed to be necessary, the question would be, would a fence serve that same purpose? If so, then you should utilize a fence instead of a masonry wall. Additionally, your commission cannot impose restrictions or improvements under this federal law related to the proposed use in a manner that's different from consideration of other public institutional uses at the same location. So in essence, you have to treat it like any other religious institution or an institutional use in and of itself. Staff has reviewed the project for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and based on the size of the project, believes that categorical exemption 15303 of the State-- of the State Secure Guidelines satisfactorily addresses the project's impact on the environment, based on the information in the record to date. Page three of the staff report reminds your commission of the five findings necessary for approval of a conditional use permit. And on page four of the staff report, staff goes through and identifies how they believe your commission can make each of those findings, starting with the goals and policies of the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan, the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the fact that the zoning and the general plan are consistent, the use itself is a use allowed in that district upon approval of a conditional use permit, and finally, the fact that, should it be approved, subject to conditions, those conditions are intended through the county development standards to ensure that it is not materially detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or to property and residents in the vicinity. These should provide the necessary assurances that it also complies with all applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations, whether they be local, state, or federal. Based on this evaluation, staff concludes that the request sufficiently demonstrates compliance with the necessary findings, and advises your commission to approve in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. There was also one additional letter that came in at the 4:07 o'clock tonight. This is a letter that came in from Karen A. Dole. It was handed out to each of the commissioners in it. Ms. Dole indicates that she is an adjacent property owner and provides her address, location of the property that she owns, and indicates in there that they like the church, and they appreciate what it's doing for the community. I'm paraphrasing here. They have not handed any complaints, and she indicates that their tenants speak highly of living next to the church. And with that, that completes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Sprague, or Commissioner Sprague, excuse me.
Mr. Denny, can you clarify for me, because I'm confused. The staff's recommending 28 parking spaces in the application, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Sprague, through the chair.
And do we need to include that with a motion?
I believe there is a recommended condition that requires that they comply with the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. Those parking spaces are based on the number in the congregation as well. If the congregation changes to get larger, they would have to provide more.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Denny. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other initial questions for staff? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the public portion of this hearing. Is the applicant here, and would the applicant like to make some opening comments? Could you please state your record, or, excuse me, state your name for the record, please?
My name's Ben Hanna. I'm the president and pastor of Church Without Walls.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I was just, I was opening it up to the applicant, which is you, to see if you had any initial comments that you wanted to make.
Yeah, we have made a couple corrections that we turned into the planning department about the actual amount of people in the church is 75. The 97 was our future plans, and I didn't know which one to go by. We do have the 23, but we can make 28 parking spots if we have to, because when the coach comes out, we'll have that space there. We've been there for five years, as you say, without permission, but we have been doing what we can to do. The church actually owns the property now, so we've been working hard to get it done. Yes, there is two churches in the neighborhood. One is a Keepers Across, who is a motorcycle church organization, and the other one is another denomination. We don't feel that we're competing with one another, and we bet we're not on the same wavelength with our denomination, which is actually non-denominations, because we work with a lot of people. We have mostly homeless people and the people in the neighborhood, and we have mostly foot traffic. But our goal is to keep and help the people in the Oildale area. We also help with antibiotics, and we give out food bags and help whatever way we can to not just be the church, but we're the whole area. I'm new at this, so I don't know what else. We have, like I said, we've been working forward to it. We've worked with the fire department, and we're in the, getting our process to get our tent put up. I've got all the requirements done. I'm just waiting for the approval of the board in that 14-day waiting period before I could turn it into the fire department to put up the tent, and we hope before too much rain. And we've just been blessed and keep on working on it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hanna, did you have, it looks like some other individuals came up toward the microphone with you. Did, were there some other representatives, the applicant, in the microphone?
For the commissioner's sake, I'm Chuck Lackey. I'm helping Ben get through the process and get his conditional use permit. It was brought to our attention, he was working without a compliance, and that's the whole goal of this project, is to bring this church into compliance. There is a number of representatives in the audience as well that represent other churches that are assisting this church get started and move forward and serve their clientele or their, provide their ministry to the community. We did ask that the commission allow for phasing, which would allow for the reduced number of parking spaces to 22. Their current staff and their current maximum capacity is 75, which would provide for 22 parking spaces. It would just provide some financial assistance if they could phase that, if they expand, then of course they'd have to comply with that, it's in the staff report. If they would exceed the 75, then they'd have to come back in and put the full 28 parking spaces, as is in the staff report. Since it's a reduction in scope of project, I believe that your commission could include that in your findings, if you find, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Any other speakers on the, well, who are with the applicant? Who are with the applicant specifically? I'm going to ask in a moment to have speakers come speak in favor of or in opposition to, but is there someone who is actually with the applicant, is, you know, with the applicant as far as the processing? Okay, seeing none, I will get to you, everyone's going to get a chance to speak, but what I'd like to do is begin by asking people who are in opposition to staff's recommendation, opposition to the project. If there's anyone here, could you please raise your hand, who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll now go to the people who would like to speak in favor of the project. By show of hands, how many are there? Looks like about four. If you could make your way down to the front, we'll start with the gentleman who's in the front row. Can you please approach the microphone and state your name?
Hi, my name is John Roach. I've been with Ben and the church for a few years now, and I just wanted to say one thing. In accordance to the letters opposing, which stated that they thought that there would be more foot traffic, I can't see how that would be, since we've been doing it with 75 people for five years now, so there's not going to be any more foot traffic, so that's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name's Robert Sandoval, Sandoval, and Church Without Walls brings in anybody, helps anybody out. I'm an ex-convict, I'm from the streets, and if it wasn't for them, I'd probably be back in prison. They help, they don't care about your background. They're going to be there to help you out, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Chris Van Dyke, and I head up Lost and Found Ministries from Life Point Church. I encourage you to, I'm encouraged, just listening to this tonight, because we do great work with the Church Without Walls, and just loving people in the neighborhood. There's a lot of needs down there, helping people earning their trust, getting, helping them get cleaned up off of drugs, alcohol, and the whatnot, helping families kind of find each other again, be restored for this ministry. It's a great ministry, so I encourage you to think, to help us to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes, hi, my name's Raymond Handmaker. My wife and I, we do a ministry of a food giveaway.
Can you tell us your name?
Raymond Handmaker.
Thank you.
And just like Chris said, it's a great ministry. We're helping the community, the community really needs the help right there in that area. Ben's a great guy, he's been doing this for a couple of years now, and the community's just getting better down there, I believe. It's just the thing that Chris is working. That's all I have to say.
All right, Commissioner Babcock, do you have something? For Mr. Hanna? Are there any other speakers in favor? Do you mind if we take this one speaker? Ma'am, please.
Hi, my name is Melissa Handmaker, Raymond's wife. Like my husband said, we actually moved to this area a year ago, and for us, when we moved to the area, we had moved to Oildale, and we saw a lot of the need in Oildale, and immediately we wanted to help out in the area. And we worked with Chris originally, because we go to Life Point Church, and we saw all the wonderful things Ben was doing in the community. So my husband and I volunteered. We do the children's ministry there, we do a food ministry, and anything they need, we help out, because we've seen, since I've been here, I've seen a lot of wonderful things happen. I've seen people get fed that need to be fed. I've seen people need blankets, get blankets. I've seen people help get medications, you know, needs being met that aren't met anywhere else. And I really feel like Ben's doing a really wonderful thing, and I hope you guys consider it, and, you know, let him allow, allow him to continue to do his great work in the community. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Bob Perry. I've been going down to Church Without Walls for about nine years. We used to meet just up the street next to Beardsley Market. I come from the west side of town, and what Ben and the Church Without Walls is doing is helping spread some hope in a very dark area. Quite frankly, the lot that the two C trains sit on, if the church wasn't there, it would be a big lot where drugs would be used and people would shoot up, and it is a safe place for people to go. They feed kids in the summertime, when they don't have food at the school programs, when there's no money. And my small group has been going down there every Sunday, the third Sunday, for nine years, feeding the homeless and giving them hope, knowing that they can have a different life and a different opportunity. And part of why I help is if you don't help someone that's been in jail, you don't help someone see that God is important in their life, they're going to be in your home, they're going to be robbing your home, they're going to be in, so people need to change, but they need to be loved, and that's what Church Without Walls represents. So if you can help us move forward to being in compliance, we'd love to be that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we have a question by Commissioner Babcock. I believe Commissioner Babcock would like to ask the applicant, Mr. Hanna, a question, if that's okay. Commissioner Babcock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hanna, you heard in the staff report that your mobile building has to come down.
Yes, sir.
Do you have an idea how long it will take you to build your permanent facility?
No, sir. We're working on it. We have several plans in mind, but we haven't got any of them stabilized yet or a full drawing of them. I'm hoping within the next six months to a year, because a building, you know, building takes a while and stuff. We're hoping as soon as possible. The coach will be out within the next six weeks, I mean, 60 days. It's already unplanned, we already moved it, so we're trying as hard as we can. We just got the notice on the coach just last week that it had to be moved, so we're already working on it. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hanna, before you sit down, did you have any closing remarks you'd like to make? I don't think there is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak.
Not really, because I'm just, I feel I'm doing what God wants me to do, and this is what God wants us to be, and I just appreciate the opportunity to have this time with you guys.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public portion of this hearing and bring it back to staff. Does staff have any comments?
Commissioner Louis, I believe we can assist with a revised condition on the parking to your commission's satisfaction with what Mr. Lackey has indicated with regard to the, and Mr. Hanna have indicated with regard to the size of the existing congregation and future growth. When you're ready for that, I can read that condition for your commission's consideration. I think we'd also like to just take a small renumbering for the purposes of clarification on another set of conditions, just for clerical purposes, but we're prepared to assist your commission.
Any comments?
Let's go ahead and hear it.
It sounds like everyone wants to go ahead and hear the updates.
Great. So, you already have a condition 12A that discusses parking to some degree. It also indicates that if there was insufficient amount of parking that could be provided, we made provisions for them asking for it a later date. They've indicated the otherwise, that they can have, they'll have a smaller congregation and get larger. What I propose is, under 12A, that we strike, starting from the first line, the phrase, unless a subsequent approval in the form of a modification or variance for reduction in the amount of required parking is obtained in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Kern County zoning ordinance. I'd like to see that removed for your commission. Then what we would do is, we would take 12B and insert it in that place, so that it would read, "A minimum of 28 onsite parking spaces shall be provided," period. Parking shall be provided, as illustrated on the approved plan, and then we'll continue with the development standard that we have already that says, "And may be phased based upon the size of the congregation." It would then follow on, handicap accessible parking shall be provided in accordance with requirements of Title IV of the California Administrative Code. Parking shall be provided in accordance with Chapter 19.82. So while it'll still say 28, the ordinance recognizes that a smaller amount can be provided. It would be done as under the phasing concept, and should the congregation get larger than the 97, which the 28 is based upon, more parking would be required. So it gives flexibility both to the applicant at a smaller size and at a larger size, should it continue to grow and be successful and cover the county's, and continue to demonstrate adherence to the county's development standard. So in the end, it would read, "A minimum of 28 onsite parking spaces shall be provided," period. Parking shall be provided, as illustrated in the approved plan, and may be phased based upon the size of the congregation. Handicap accessible parking spaces shall be provided in accordance with the requirements of Title 24 of the California Administrative Code. Parking shall be provided in accordance with Chapter 19.82 of the zoning ordinance. And it's that last sentence that allows it to both be phased and add more spaces in the future, should it be successful.
Mr. Chairman?
Why do we need that first sentence, "A minimum of 28 onsite parking spaces shall be provided"? Why do we even need that?
Technically...
Go ahead.
My apologies, I interrupted.
Go ahead.
Technically, you don't, you could just leave it, you could leave it simply, "Parking shall be provided, as illustrated in the approved plan," and then indicate that it can be phased. You could delete the first part if you want, and we would still be covered with the "As provided in accordance with Nineteen..." provided in accordance with 19.82." The reason why staff historically mentions the number of spaces required is so that at any point in time, somebody looks at a site plan, they know how many spaces are required, not only staff, but the applicants or other individuals looking at it. Without knowing how parking is calculated, a person wouldn't know how many should be there to begin with. So it's a tool that we use.
You could go, "A minimum of 22." Mr. Chairman, may...
Yes. Commissioner Babcock.
Scott, could we do a minimum of, the minimum was 22?
A minimum of, Mr. Nino.
I said 23 before.
I believe Mr. Nino indicated that a reduced size of 75 or 76 might be actually 23.
23.
I don't want to quibble over it.
Could we...
The fact remains is irregardless of what you say, as long as it says, "Provided in accordance with the zoning ordinance," will have sufficient...
Well, I tend to agree with you. I think we need a number there.
All right. I would suggest then, "A minimum of 23 onsite parking spaces shall be provided," which is what they originally showed.
And then, could we add one more sentence at the end to be reviewed annually?
Yes, we could say, "A yearly statement shall be provided to the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department by the applicant regarding the size of the congregation or the average attendance at a congregation."
Okay.
Would you like to do that?
Something along those lines would work for me.
Then what we'll add is the last sentence is, "Each year, the applicant shall furnish a written statement to the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department regarding the size of the congregation." We'll recalculate the parking based on the size of the calculation.
And the required parking.
We would recalculate the parking based on that.
That's good. Excuse me, that's good.
Any comments? Any other comments?
Yes, Commissioner. I still get to renumber, don't I?
Oh, excuse me, please.
I noticed we have a typographical error, and I apologize. Right now, there's a condition 13 and 13A. I would suggest, if we could, that we simply make them 13J and K. And that completes staff's request for revisions and...
If there are, are there any more comments of commissioners? I'd be prepared to make the motion to approve this application in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution and the changes that staff has made tonight in the conditions. I would second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Babcock, seconded by Commissioner Sprague. Please cast your votes.
Aye.
And can we read the notice of right to appeal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available by the department. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of this hearing.
Thank you, and that brings us to adjournment. Our next planning commission meeting is Thursday, December 8th, 2016, 7:00 PM in these board chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.[1713.25]